嘘って知ってて悔しかった
Howdy y'all! We're so fucking back! We are so fucking back! The music sounds good. Okay, I think everything's good. Let's see if I set up OBS right. I'm here, I'm real again. It's been so fucking long, oh my god, it's been so long since I've streamed. It's been too long, I've been going insane. I've been going absolutely goddamn stir-crazy and insane, but it's fine. It's fine because we're back. Hello, hi Nikki, hi Ash, hi Ice, it's so good to see you again. Hello, hello, my tracking? Prince Aaron, hello! And there's a, there's a reap, there's Amirardbark, that's Ard Bark in chat, hello? Uh, holy shit, I've had a rough, I've had a rough few weeks, y'all. Uh, in case, let me put my laptop away for now. In case there are people not like following me on Twitter and who have not been seeing my various ranting tweets for the past few weeks, you know, in case you have like anything better to do with your lives, then look at... Then, it's a nightmare, don't go on Twitter, it's a nightmare, I'm only on there for work. But uh, I've been in the process. I thought for a bit that um, the PC that I had wasn't really powerful enough for the rigors of being a VTuber. The thing is, it did a fine enough job. I was just thinking I could like, probably upgrade, you know what I mean? So I put it up, I got sick of the thing and I put it up for sale again and someone actually bought it. I've been off Twitter for a couple of weeks, so I don't know if I catch stuff you rent about. Um, so I will catch you up to speed here. I sold my old PC, I tried to sell it a few times, no one fucking wanted it. And then someone, uh, this time they put a, someone put a bid on it. So I'm like, well, okay, this is gonna sell now, I can't do anything about that. And I quickly realized I should've waited it, I should've waited to do this. I should've waited until like during summer. Uh, but it was too late, so I was like, well, now I have to get a new, now I have to start looking for a new better PC. There might've been a few better options, but the one I'm using right now, uh, that's what you're, that's what I'm using right now, the new PC I got. And Jesus Christ, there were so many issues. Jesus Christ, there were so many fucking issues with the whole process, chat. Chat, I'm not fucking with you, it was... There were so many issues with... Hang on. Oh, my teeth are peeking through my lip, that's no good, I have to fix that. Uh, there were issues with the, um, I unpacked my old one good enough, so then part of it came off when it got shipped and then the buyer wasn't happy 'cause like the wifi wasn't working and there's so many issues. And I was so fucking worried that they were gonna send it back and I was gonna have to like get money back. Um, they said luckily that they're just gonna keep it though, so I should get that payment soon. I hope at least a few have not have most worked out. It's, it's working out. I'm lucky I have some money, like you know, in storage. Because then, ouchies, yeah, computer issues such a pain in the ass. Yeah, and then this one, uh, the dude fucking lied to me about a few things with this PC. Like for example, it only has 24GB of RAM, which is um, it's more than my last one had, 16, my last one had 16, this one has 24. So it's still an improvement. Uh, but the guy specifically told me it was 32GB of RAM. And that was like one of the main, like I spent a lot more than I spent on my first PC for this one. Uh, and that was one of the main reasons, 'cause it had so much RAM. And I asked the guy like, hey, no, you specifically told me this has 32GB of RAM. Uh, so why, what fucking gives? And he was just like, oops, sorry. I'm not even joking. But to call this guy that sold me this PC unprofessional is ridiculous. Like I, it had some issues because of the shipping when I, when I got it. And he was like, oh, and he was just like, you know, ranting to me about his like ex-girlfriend being in the hospital and then it's like, oh man, I'm gonna kill myself, Jesus Christ. And I was like, I get it, like I get it, but also I'm struggling here too, you know? A literal bitch, and the thing is, I don't even wanna like, I don't even wanna like ask for like a partial refund or anything 'cause this guy just makes me so fucking uncomfortable. And also, based on what, um, well, based on what he showed me, uh, eBay took like a large fee, so most of the, what I spent isn't even going to him. So at this point, it's like, well, he fucking needs the money. Um, so unless I can like get some back from eBay themselves, it's just like, you know what, I got it working, it shouldn't be hard to like buy... It seems like there's just an empty RAM slot, so I should just be able to buy like another 8GB of RAM at some point and then get that full 32GB, so it's fine. So sold old PC, got new PC, but new one is mess, you got a new new PC. No, it's just the, um, hi Eric, thank you for redeeming stretch, okay. Ugh, I'm gonna get some work done today to break in the new one. So no, this is not new new PC. Woohoo! This is just the one I got from that guy, I managed to fix like most of the issues and kinks that it had and stuff. I managed to get most of that under wrapped, so it has some wifi issues, but it seems like it's doing fine for now. Like I tried to boot up the stream and there were some issues with connection 'cause I've been having connection issues with it. Um, but it's working fine right now, so that's what's important. And it seems like it's handling stream pretty well. So I think this is like, regardless of any problems, it is definitely an upgrade for my old PC. And I'm hoping that I can just like, you know, make a few improvements here and there and then I'll never, ever, ever have to buy another PC again. I don't ever wanna have to go through this process again of like selling the old one and getting new one. It's been a fucking mess, chat. If you are ever gonna do shit like this where you're transferring from one computer to another, please prepare extensively beforehand, because so many things could go wrong. It's fucking ridiculous. Ugh, see, that's why I haven't streamed in a while, because I've been getting this shit all sorted out. And even when I got the thing, like you know, I had to set it all up, I had to fix the issues. Uh, but I think we're good for most part now. Also, maybe not sell on eBay? I, I mean, look, next time, next time I am uh, selling something as fragile and you know, important as a PC, next time, I'm not shipping it. Local pickup only, I'm never dealing with that shit again. I've been trying to get my data off the current SSD and onto a new one, got like a year and a half ago and it's been, ugh. Have you brought it to a place yet? Like I know they charge money, so you'd have to save up money for that, but I think a place might be able to help you with that. Um, so yeah, I've been going through that whole, you know, process. 'Cause um, 'cause actually I got like a very big commission recently and that gave me enough money where I was like, yeah, I can afford to uh, upgrade to a better PC now. Um, and then all this shit happened, so I still haven't gotten the money from my uh, old PC 'cause of all the issues. And now, hi Abby, I'm getting my ass beat by art! Same! Oh god, I have to do my commissions. Oh, good suggestion, I'll look into that, yeah. Yeah, I think um, places, you know, computer repair places, they can generally uh, get stuff off your old shit. They can generally get the data off, they're, you know, they're experts at that. I mean, you don't have to pay them for it, but you know, if you have the money. So yeah. Less money than I'd expect by now because of uh, the expense of the PC and not getting as much for the uh, old one. Abby, I cannot find showtimes for Spider-Man at my local theater for the life of me! David, you have to go into the underground theater. You have to look, you have to go onto the dark web and you have to find the theater that's run in the, in the subways of your town. Also, hello, I want to hear my V-roid pain of today. I don't know if I'm gonna get back to V-roid. I also have commissions trades I gotta do. Yeah, and one of my, one of my commissions is yours, Aaron, I gotta, I gotta get cracking on your model. Um, we don't have subways here? Oh, I don't mean the um, I don't mean underground like trainways, I mean like the restaurant. I mean like, I mean like in a subway, there's a movie theater, you just have to know the secret password. Wanna hear my pain today? I will listen to your pain, Ice, it is good to hear from you again. I have missed hearing, I've missed y'all so much, I'm so happy. I'm just so happy to be streaming again and that like, so far everything's not breaking. I would have a calm to work on if the commissioner told me what to draw when they sent me a character about nine days ago, no response. I am so sorry, I hope they get back to you, Ash. Otherwise, they're just gonna have to accept that it's gonna be like a skep-style thing. Um, so yeah, I went through, so I've been going through that whole process of transferring from my PC to this new one. The thing is aesthetically, it's much better. Aesthetically, it's gorgeous, like it's got the glass that lets you look inside, it's got the RGB fans. It's, I just hope I never have to get another one, like I'm just hap, I hope I'm just happy with this one for the rest of my life. Was working on my model and pressed to go back to model selection since I did some changes that I did not like, so quickest way to fix that, open the file. I never save and there's no auto-save, no! Oh god, Ice, I'm so sorry. The only consolation I can offer is that sometimes when that happens and you go back, you can do it better than you did the first time. So maybe consider that a learning experience, I don't know. I'm technically working right now, but I've been working shit low recently, so I'm relaxing, well... You should get to relax if you've been working, so it's more like mine. There's a subway near my local AMC. Okay. Spider-Man's around, you just have to find him. So what was I saying? Um, yeah. So, before anything else, I would say, would love to build a crazy whack-good PC and slap it in a case from the late 90s. I'm very stupid is the thing, so getting like one that's used is just, it was just always gonna be like, better for me because I don't have to deal with, you know, buying all the parts and uh, putting it together myself. It's just less expensive all around, all things considered. And hey, this thing's performing pretty well so far, it seems. Probably just have to walk down Friday, simply ask if there's showings. Yeah, and then you get some popcorn while you're there. Hey, Princess Luna Nightshade, hello, welcome on in, I'm, I'm streaming on a new PC today. Uh, luckily things are going well so far, it seems. Um, so yeah, that's the recap chat, I've been going through that process. Also chat is slightly cut off. I'm gonna scream. Hang on, I think I moved chat for something. There was something I moved chat for and then I never moved it back. Have you done some games with the new PC? Not yet, we're gonna save that, we're gonna save that for another stream. Hang on, fucking, I moved chat for some reason and I don't remember what it was, I just wanted to see something, I think. Let me move you guys back. We're just chatting. Okay. Let's try this. Chat, type things, we gotta see where the new chat box is. Mix it up is not like, very good with this sort of thing, of me seeing in real time where stuff ends up. Oh, there we go. Wait, I don't have BTS POG on, shit, 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 David, I'm so sorry! I knew I was forgetting something. Come on, come on, come on, come on, hon. Come on, come on, come on, oh! Raffi, what were you saying? I didn't hear you. Where's my, wait, where's my sound, where's my uh, ti- Where's my alerts? Chat, I swear I had mix-it-up working.
POG online, POGers.
There we go, Raffi. Okay, hang on. Okay. Let's try to do your thing again, David. New PC growing pains, gotta love him, Jesus Christ. Yippee scuff, shut up, I'm a professional! Hang on, I'm gonna do your redeem for you, David, 'cause I have infinite points since they're mine. Let's see if that works. Are you gonna say Uncle David's words? Okay? Okay, great. This is great. Chat's a little too far to the uh, one side, let me move that over. Try that. Wait, for some reason, Starry also doesn't wanna do the channel point redeems? Mm, maybe it's something with BTS POG then? Around a month ago, I had to get a new computer for schoolwork 'cause it kept freezing and crashing a lot, so I can relate. Oh yeah, speaking of, uh, speaking of, guess what? Amidst all of this other like bullshit I was doing because um, I was thrust into the situation of having to uh, replace my uh, you know, PC, I had to go through that whole process and I had to spend money for that, guess what? Guess what else happened recently? My laptop broke. My fucking laptop broke that I used for school. And I brought it to the place. You got a boyfriend? I wish! I fucking wish! I wish! I wish, I wish, Ice, I wish, I wish with all my heart that that were the case, but it's not! That was quite the issue. So yeah, um, my laptop broke recently and it's my fault 'cause I was too rough with it. Um, freaking, I tried calling the theater to ask and apparently due to high call volume, they're not able to have showtimes over the phone, how does that make sense? Well, you see David, there's a lot of people in this world who are very lazy and they don't wanna do their jobs and they're gonna put a robot on the phone so that they don't have to talk to you, I hope that helps. My guess was wrong. I, I tried so hard, Ice, I tried so hard, I tried so hard and it didn't work. Okay, so yeah, uh, laptop broke. So on top of the expense of uh, you know, my transfer to a new PC, which I thought I had, you know, plenty of funds for, then this shit happened. And luckily I managed to find a replacement, a used replacement that's in very good condition. It's about, it's, it's pretty much exactly the same as my current one, so if I have to fool my dad, I can fool my dad. Hey, you have a snatcher to hug? I do have a snatcher to hug. He's on my bed right now. He's just chilling out while I stream. Okay. Um, so yeah, that happened. Uh, so yeah. Had to get the whole new PC setup, had to do that whole process. That's why I haven't been streaming for a while. As you can see, there's still some scuff. And then my laptop broke. So that's an extra expense. Um, I'm just lucky I managed to find like a good model that's pretty much the same. Even down to some of like the numbers on the back that I can uh, use instead. And now I have to figure out how to get all the fucking stickers that I put on my laptop off of there. Do my toggles still work? Can I wave to you guys? Hi everybody! Imagine him going up to Raffi, going, hey kiddo, got a deal for ya! Dropkicking him right after. Bro, I'm throwing Raffi directly at his face. My sweet child is gonna latch on like an octopus. Listen, minors cannot sign legally binding contracts, okay? That is just the law. And he should know the law, so Raffi is fine, Raffi is safe. I'm gonna turn off TTS for now, actually. Let me um, just open up BTS POG again. Let's see, Twitch is connected. Let me just try one more time. Raffi has learned to appreciate violence early. Oh, my child? Absolutely! It's law here on Earth! Hell knows what is on that planet, I'm hoping it's the same. Let me try something, let me try this again. No. Okay, you're not gonna talk today? That's fine, that's fine, Raffi. Uh, I'm just gonna disable that points redeem really quick, so nobody else has to waste their points. Handle points. See, if I had to do all this shit with the uh, previous PC, I'd probably be struggling a little bit here. But when it doesn't, when it, when it's not having wifi issues, it runs just fine. Hi LPG! Oh, drink water? Okay, I have a beverage. I had it prepared this time, I'm gonna drink. Thank you, David. So, I did just wanna take a moment... Did I say hi to you, LPG? Hi again if I, if I didn't already. If I did, you get another one. I just wanna say, amidst all this horrible shit that's been happening to me, congratulations with the new PC. David again? Okay, I'll drink again. PC, I am hope OBS don't crash. So far, it's considering the uh, wifi issues that it's been having, drown the streamer, no! Please, I'll have to go get more beverage, hydration gun. I will defeat Megamind with the ultimate anti-weapon to his dehydration gun. It's too bad they never made a sequel to that, huh? It's too bad. Probably better in it on a high note, oh, hairdo change. Y'all are actually using my redeems for once, I'm amazed. Okay, so that was the situation and that's why it's been a while. I wanna tell you guys that um, the process of getting to the uh, re-debut, I have a bunch of new shit prepared. I just have to get a few more things done in Live 2D and then I'll set it an official date to uh, have that re-debut, show you guys all the new stuff, I'm so excited for it. Like I got new improved mostly everything, you're gonna love it. Drink water? Okay, it's my last bit of water. Ah, ah, it's absolutely adorable hair I've never seen before, holy wowza! Yeah, it's my uh, other, my uh, little pigtails. The ends are kinda, the ends are pink, but it's kinda hidden, so you can't really see it, unless I sort of... But yeah, I wanted to give myself a little bit of whimsy, you know? I deserve to be cute. Okay. So yeah, I promise, cutie, thank you, hehehehe, thank you! Um, so yeah, I promise you guys, as soon as I have like the last big thing ready, I'm gonna make like a trailer video and I'm gonna set a date, I'm gonna set a date to uh, bring out all the new shit that I have. And uh, even then, there's still some stuff to do, so I'm gonna be busy. It might have to wait until next month at least, because I do have to finish up school. I'm in like the last stretch of my semester and uh, things are getting difficult, so... I'm in like the last stretch of my semester and uh things are getting difficult, so I'm gonna have to focus on that pretty much. And remember to try to find your Wii U so I can mod it. If not, I can always mod your Wii. David, I hate to say it, I was like all prepared. Pardon me. I was like all prepared to mod my Wii. Uh, for legal reasons, this is all a joke. This is not, none of this actually happened. So I was like preparing to mod my Wii. It was like, okay, I got all these steps to get the Homebrew channel on here. I got that and now I'm ready. And then I open up the Wii and what do I see on the Wii, David? The Homebrew channel. It's just right there. Wow. So uh that's a little gift that my brother gave me, I suppose, from beyond the grave. Beforehand, he must have done that, so uh everyone give a big thanks to my, to my late brother for, so I didn't have to mod my fucking Wii. For modding Wii, it's easy to use USB drive and SD card. Yeah, I, I, I had all the equipment. I just have to find my Wii U now. Um, so yeah. I will say like, you know, that stuff is gonna come a little slower until I'm done with this semester and I can be sure that I can pass all my classes. School, school has to take priority, obviously. Um, so I'm sorry if I'm a little slow with my commissions, but I do wanna take a moment to really thank the people that um are currently in my queue, the people that are currently commissioning me, because I might be in like not a great financial situation right now with all this horrible shit happening, but it would be even worse if they hadn't like, like everyone in my queue has gotten all their payments in early and it like surprised me so much. Y'all have gotten all your payments in and that has helped me so much and I'm so, so goddamn grateful to people who, you know, give me work and trust me with bringing their ideas to life through art. Fucking emote. Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, I need to properly thank you, Aaron. Thank you so much for getting that in. That really helped. I have a Wii U, but I don't think I will mod it. You don't need to. It's fine on its own. And because of that, things are not as dire as they could be and I promise I will keep y'all updated. I will get to your commissions as soon as I can. I want two Wii U's, one to mod and one not to mod. God, that's gonna be expensive, though. I mean, how expensive could a Wii U be, all things considered? Um, so yeah, everything seems to be fine. Yeah, the, the worst thing happening right now was the laptop breaking. But I'm just hoping that the main issue there is that it was my dad's that he gave me after I fucking broke the last one. And I do not, I cannot let him find out I broke this one too. Genuinely, I just cannot. And because the one that I've ordered, the one that I've gotten to replace this is pretty much the same, I'm hoping that's never gonna happen. I'm hoping I can just like, I'm hoping if he ever like asks like, hey, you want a new one? Or like an upgrade, I'll be like, no, I'm just gonna keep this one. Uh, I like it a lot. Please don't ever ask to look at it again. Thank you. But the thing is, because I'm an adult now, I'm a fucking adult, I can probably just say that and get away with it. Don't worry, my guy. I've gone through a lot of laptops in my life. Well, the last one fucking sucked. Last one like kept fucking up and ruining my life. This one I'm hoping is much better and then I won't have to like just sort of toss it under my bed. I'm gonna try to be more careful with it, though. I do not want to have to spend money on a new laptop again. Okay, I think that was everything I needed to catch up on. The situation with replacing my PC, my fucking laptop, that, you know, bad situation, but I'm gonna fix that. And I have some other stuff I can, I'm gonna try to sell in uh recent, in the near future to get some more money back. Uh, commissions, those are going to stay closed until I get through my current queue. The uh new shit, all that new shit is gonna, I'm gonna get that done. I'm gonna debut that. And that's pretty much all there is for housekeeping, I'm pretty sure. Uh, LPG, your hairstyle is very cool. Thank you, LPG. Mine's Sailor Moon style. Yeah, yeah. I'm trying to like channel Miku a little bit, my queen Miku, which by the way, I'm so fucking upset about, I'm so fucking upset about Miku Expo and them fucking. Y'all saw that, right? The LED screen? The thing is, the rumors were saying like, oh, Miku Expo must be using this cheap ass screen because they're saving the hologram. It's over at Coachella. But I saw, oh, I heard the TV thing. Yeah, yeah, Ice, it's insane. It looks so bad. But the thing is, at Coachella, I saw like, I saw like clips of Miku's set from there and it's the LED screen too. So it's like, where's the hologram tech? Where the fuck did you, what did you guys do with it? Um, so. Um, the unfortunate upside of this is that I did spend money on tickets for that. And because of this shit, I was like, well, fuck it, I'll get a refund. So I didn't manage to get all the money back I spent on those tickets, but I managed to get a good bit. So that is gonna help me with the current situation. Imagine that being your first concert and me waiting to go one your whole life? No joke, that was gonna be my first concert. I'd never been to a concert before and I was like, holy shit, my first concert is gonna be Miku. I'm so excited. And then it's like, well, what's the fucking point here? What's the point? By the way, is there a Metaton from Undertale in your background by chance? Yeah, yeah, that's a poster. That's the official like uh Undertale poster that they have for sale. I actually have that in my room, like in my real life uh room, like behind me right now. It's a great fucking poster. I just love Undertale. I really love Undertale. I saw the comparison of the LED screen being integrated into the set versus not and is really what makes or breaks it. I do agree with that because, you know, the one other issue is that they were like lighting the whole stage behind it, so there was like no, it was just very purely like a TV, like you could, there was no illusion there. I see Clown from Delterun. That's Jevil. I fucking love Jevil. I also have his plush in my room, like IRL. Uh, but still, considering the technology they have and how goddamn expensive those tickets were, you'd expect to see like Miku dancing around up there through her glass screens, but no. And apparently they even sold out of the LED sticks really quick, so it's like, this whole thing is just very weird and like feels very slapdash. I am wondering if it's because Crunchyroll is like sponsoring them and like maybe they, they were cheapskates about it. I don't know. We're gonna have to see what happens. Okay. I think that's, yeah, I did all my housekeeping. God, I just need to uh. The unfortunate thing about my uh, all my new shit and debuting all that is the last thing I have to do is like a bunch of like really difficult and tedious shit, so it's like, I don't wanna do that, but I have to do it because it's gonna work out. Yeah, cost cutting. Yeah, and it's like, why, you can't spare expenses for Miku. And it's, it's not even like the actual band that she's usually with either. Like it's some North American band, which I heard they, they're doing a pretty good job, but still, it's just weird that it's not like the actual band. And apparently this band actually did like mess up a guitar riff, so they're not perfect. So it's like, I don't know. I got my money back, so it's like, it's fine. So yeah, that is the situation. New PC right now. I am going to focus on school, get all this shit done, try to pass all my classes. Uh, unfortunately, I can't afford to like perfectly rest this summer. I can't afford to like super, super rest this summer because I do have to take a summer class. It just sort of worked out. It's not like I didn't have enough room. Can we go to a Miku concert? No, we have a Miku concert. My concert! Bro, Miku? They're gonna, no, you, instead of the LED screen, instead of the LED screen, they should have just had this like, this like really muscular dude come out in like an ill-fitting Miku costume with like a bad wig and been like, hey, sup? It's me. Hotzun Mike. It's me, Mike, everybody. I'm here. I'm here to serenade you and whatever. And then he just, he just performs and that's just the Miku concert. I would love to see Mike perform, honestly. I'd be so happy. Fuck yeah, Miku concert at home. I mean, I'm playing Vocaloid songs right now in the background, so this is, this is the Miku we have at home. Sorry. The best part about new PC, though, the best part, is uh I get another free trial of Live 2D. Yeah, I'm going to. I will spoil one thing for all the new shit. I'm working on a new toggle for my models and I am gonna have to put it in this one too. Because me holding a knife is in so much of my like art and shit. It's like such a big part of my identity and there's no option for my model to hold a knife, so I am gonna add a toggle where I'm holding a knife up at the screen. So don't you worry about that, okay? Uh, I think that was all I had to talk about. Did the housekeeping, did everything. Yeah, school is just gonna get weird for a bit, so I'm just going to focus on that, but I'm still gonna try to find time for some guerrilla streams um between now and the end of the semester. Thank you for follow. I'm not a streamer. I use Twitch only for the sake of communicating people and events. It's fine. It's a little follow. It helps you keep track of people. Sometimes you just wanna drop someone a follow for the hell of it. Ugh, I think that was all I had to talk about. Okay. So. The whole point of. Track my face. Okay. The whole point of this stream. It's been like an hour and I still haven't gotten to it. So I am going to try to catch up on some schoolwork. To sort of break in the new PC, so far it's doing a pretty good job with, with streaming, to sort of break it in a little bit. We are going to have a work along stream. We're gonna have a little work along stream. And it is going to uh, I'm gonna do my homework. I'm gonna get some work done that I should have gotten done, like hours ago. And y'all are free to uh work along with me. We're gonna be using the Pomodoro method, so it'll be, you know, 25 minutes on, five minute break, just have that cycle. And uh if I get enough of my work done, I might switch to like doing commissions. I'm back. Got more milk. I got a little snack. I'm gonna try something really quick. Uh, wrote editing job. Oh, that's cool. Art rigging. Yeah, I might do some art later. I'll have to see how tired I am after doing some homework. Welcome back. Hi, Ice. I did see what you sent me, by the way. I will look into that later. I must just conserve my money right now. The thing is, streaming, it's just the act of streaming itself always takes a little bit out of me, so for some reason. So I'll just have to see. Pardon me. Okay. My little snack. Pardon me, Jesus. My laptop out. Let me try something, hang on. Uh, let's see. Yeah, it makes sense. Requires more social energy. That's true. Also, I just have to like sit at my desk, which is a hassle. Oh. Why is it clear? That's not gonna work. Okay, hang on. It's fair. So I wanted to bring in your intentions since it's new and you mentioned the Pomodoro timer. Yeah, hang on. I'm going to not be able to show this on stream. Yeah, hang on, I'm going to not be able to show this on stream. Really quick, I'm gonna see if my alerts are broken. I'm gonna check that if they're broken. Let's see. Twitch channel... Followed. Let's test this one. That one works. Subscribe, let's test this one. That one's broken! Jesus! What the fuck? What the fuck is going on here? Hang on. Yeah, I'm gonna have to fix that later. Wait! Why is it not tracking my face? Hey! I'm not beating the scuff allegations. Welcome back Malice. Hi LPG, hang on, I'm not beating the allegations. Let's see if that fixed anything a little bit. It's a little better? It's fine, I'll fix the rest of it later. Okay. Sorry, I was hungry. Alright, let's start the, uh, let's start the timer. Let's get working. Like I said... Um, well you guys will hear it beep when it stops, so let's start. Like I was talking about earlier, I, um, I do, I can't like dedicate all my energy to content creation this summer like I would like. Uh, because I do have to take one summer class. It just sort of worked out that this one class that I do need to take to graduate, um, was not being available, was not being offered at all next year. And so I wouldn't be able to like graduate in two more semesters. Um, if I didn't take this summer class, I would have to like take one extra semester. So I'd rather just take this during the summer and get it over with. But it's just one class, so hopefully I'll still have time for stuff. You put the timer on the screen? I'll try. Hang on. Let's see. I just have to eat that one last pastry. Okay. There we go. That's the wrong one. Where the fuck is it? There we go. Only one class is much so stressful than a full set of credit hours. Yeah, it is gonna be a lot less stressful, so I still will have time... For shit. For like more shit than during the school year, it's just gonna be, you know, not full free time. It probably wouldn't be anyway since I was like gonna get a job or something, but, be fine. Alright, there we go. Hello. Hi Big Boss, welcome on in, I'm back. Hi Isaac! Man, everyone's coming in today, hello! Welcome everyone. Alright. Alright. Timer started. I gotta get to work. Alright everyone. 22 minutes on the clock, we are gonna do whatever you, whatever kind of work you want. Pardon me. And I am just gonna get to it. Wait, hang on. Still works. Alright. It doesn't have to look like I'm actually looking at the laptop this time, because I'm actually like just looking at my computer. Need like some sort of toggle that lets you know when I'm working. Do I have that much of a resting bitch face? When it comes to browser stuff chat, this computer is slow as shit and I don't understand why. What do you mean no connection babe? You're streaming me ain't ya? Everything's fine. Hello? Load the webpage! See, this is the problem of not having the laptop chat. Oh my god. This is a nightmare. Girl, stop saying you don't have a connection. I see the wifi bars in the corner of the screen, you are a liar. Oh my god, I'm gonna scream. Chat, nothing is lo- How long have I been frozen? Load! The webpage! Try a different browser, it's Firefox. This cannot be the problem. Also I've tried other browsers, I'm pretty sure they're all just really fucking slow. Come on, load, 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 I wanna work! Alright, here we go, here we go. Okay, here we go. What is this timer? This is a Pomodoro timer. This is, um, it's a work method of getting work done. Um, where you have this timer, that's 25 minutes long. And that's how long you work for. Then you take a five minute break, and you work for another 25 minutes, and you take another five minute break. And that's like repeats four times, and at the end of it you take a 15 minute break. That's a bit longer, and then you continue until your work's done. Why is there a vocloids sound that sounds like SpongeBob Super Sponge music? I don't, I don't, if that's a game, I haven't played it. Okay. Is that a game? Yeah, PS1, there's a SpongeBob game for the PS1, music identical to this. The overlap between SpongeBob and Miku. Need to be studied. Also a really accurate port on the GBA, huh? Understand what Isaac's talking about. I consider you a SpongeBob e- expert, Ardberg. Which I love SpongeBob so much, that's really impressive to me. Alright, here we go. It just kinda looks like I'm frowning into the camera, I'm sorry, I promise I'm working. Song's over now, it's fine. Okay, there we go. No, switch account, what are you talking about? What? I made this form on the wrong fucking account! I told it to switch me to the right account, it didn't fucking listen to me! Are you fucking kidding me? Oh, this is useless. Man, now I have to do it all over again. Hang on, I can just copy and paste everything. Let's see how many of these songs in this playlist get my stream muted. Okay. Fired. 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 Perfect. Alright. Shorten the URL, Jesus. Share this. Anything loads? Come on. Load. Oh my god, you suck. There we go. Okay. Now I can share that with my group members. Let's see how this form looks. Man, whatever. Why is eBay emailing me about cowboy stuff? Why is my mouth not moving? Okay. Chat, let me check something. Let me check, let me check something. The stream? Oh god. No, no, no. Stream, stream, come on. Stream, come on. Stream! Holy shit, my KBS! Uh, 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 uh. Bring me back, bring me back! Fuck, 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 fuck! Fuck, 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 fuck! Fuck, 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 fuck! Uh, hang on. We're raid, we're raid, we're raid, we're gonna raid, we're gonna raid, everybody. Hang on, hang on. Not many people are live right now. Um... We're back for now? Um, the ca- the, it's staying in the red. For OBS, it's staying in the red. We are about to crash, everybody. We have to hurry up and raid. Let me check somebody. There's not many people live right now, unfortunately. Hang on. Uh, maybe we can raid Strawberry. I'm tired anyways, guys. I'm pretty tired, I'm gonna be honest. Uh, there's a streamer doing art who I'm not really, I'm not a lot of their streams, but they seem like to have a very cute aesthetic. And it seems like they just started. Okay, we're gonna raid Strawberry, everybody, okay? I'm gonna send you over to Strawberry. Um, she's doing art. I followed this streamer a while ago, and I haven't really been to... Oh! And perfect timing. Perfect fucking timing. Alright, chat. What should our raid phrase be? I'm sorry, we have to hurry before our OBS breaks. I'm gonna get the wifi issues on this PC sorted out, don't worry. But thank you for welcoming me back. Thank you all for being here. I'm so fucking happy to be back. And I promise you more stuff. Okay, raid phrase. Raid phrase, um, Godspeed. Thank you. Thank you, soldiers. Strawberry Milk. Yes! I don't know. I don't know what that raid phrase is. Copy, paste that. Uh, we're gonna raid Strawberry. Seems like they've just started and they're doing art, so even if you can't see me do art today, you can see them doing art. Okay. Everyone, thank you so much. I love you all. A little parasocially, just a little, but it's fine. I'll be back. I'll be streaming more. Bye! Fuck me.